This conference will now be recorded.
I'm running at 110 miles an hour. Undoubtedly, I will leave something very important here, too.
Okay, if you would, let's get the meeting started. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. We do have a quorum of the Planning Commission present tonight. The usual reminder, if you would, please be sure that you have your microphone on whenever you make a remark. We need to adopt the agenda unless there's something to add or something to change in it.
So moved as submitted?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. As always, is there any general public comment before we begin? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interject.
Mm-hmm.
Before we begin, I would like to take a moment to introduce our new building and zoning technician. Stacy Meredith is in the back. It's a, and she started with us on Monday, and we're so very happy to have her along. She's doing a wonderful job so far, so we just wanted to introduce her.
Thank you. Welcome. All right. First item of new business is the adoption of the minutes for the May 21st, 2025 meeting. So if we take a quick look through those and see if we need to make any corrections or changes.
I'll make a motion to prove that submitted?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes as submitted for the May 21st meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, at this time, we need to deal with the position of secretary for the Planning Commission. We need, first of all, I guess, a motion for declaring the position vacant.
I'd like to make a motion to declare the secretary position vacant.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We now need to begin the nomination for the secretary position.
Mr. Chairman, I move to nominate the Planning and Zoning Administrator and/or his or her designee.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further nominations for the position of secretary? All right, hearing none, any discussion? All right, if not, all in favor of nominating the Planning and Zoning Administrator and/or his or her designee as the secretary? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Wonderful, you now officially have a new position. All right. Thank you, guys. With that out of the way, I thank you for your patience on that. We begin our public hearings. We have a relatively light caseload tonight. As always, we will introduce the case, have any further comments from staff. The applicant has a chance to respond to any questions. Following that, there would be time for public comment on each case. Case number RZ-04-25-01, Madison Wood Preservers Rezoning Application. Carrie Gaviria, on behalf of Madison Wood Preservers, has applied to rezone property identified as 98 Oak Park Road, Madison County Tax Map 39-96, 0.936 acres, and 206 Oak Park Road, Madison County Tax Map 39-98, 0.701 acres, from R2 Residential General to M2 Industrial General. The purpose of the rezoning application is to facilitate the expansion of Madison Wood Preservers. All right. Mr. Nichols, anything to add there?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing to add is that there is a letter from the public in your packet that's been published. The neighbor stated that they did not have a problem with the rezoning request, as though MWP has been a generally good neighbor. So I've not heard any negative feedback at this time.
All right, any questions for Mr. Nichols? Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Gaviria? If not, is there any public comment on this case? No public comment? All right, very good. Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to board this case out and board this lady out. Case number RZ-04-25-01, be recommended to Board Supervisors for approval.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded to recommend the case number RZ-04-25-01 to the Board of Supervisors for approval. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and thank you for your patience. Case number SU-04-25-01, DeVilla Smith Family Day Home Special Use Permit. Kelso Smith and Ian DeVilla are seeking a special use permit in accordance with Madison County Zoning Ordinance, Article 5-2-5, to operate a daycare center. The subject property is identified as 401 Burnt Tree Way and further identified as Madison County Tax Map 58-70F. The parcel is 3.5 acres and is Zoned R1. Mr. Nichols, anything to add?
There is a draft version of the permit in your packet that has a number of conditions that are outlined in there. Most notable is that we've defined what it is that we're permitting. We've adopted the definition of the family day home that is used by the Department of Education. While the applicant has been diligently pursuing her VDOT and VDH approval, those items are not quite in yet, so Items 7 and 8 address that those items will be presented before the, before the family day home will operate. And then the other, only other one that's in here is that this applicant, this special use permit is not transferable in the realm of the applicant and not with the land. So, otherwise, it's, it's pretty general language that we include with other special use permits.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Nichols?
I guess I got a question, Steve. I was reading it today, and it says from ages one to five. Have you been able to handle handicap kids?
Well, let's, since you've been asking a question, let's move on to the applicant, and if you can, as always, identify yourself, and then we'll move from there.
I don't know if I have a direct answer for that yet. My home does have steps, but they will be coming in the back. I think, though, since the Department of Education is on a point system, I think that would make it so we would take a different number of kids. But I don't think there's anything stopping us from taking handicap kids there.
If there's nothing stopping you, you would entertain taking handicap kids?
I would entertain it, but I'd need to do more research on it. I don't want to give you a definite answer.
I was just wondering if that's...
Also, there might be other regulations that I'm not aware of for that type of situation.
Okay. All right, any other questions for the applicant?
I guess my concern is that would that be discrimination?
If for some reason my home wouldn't be able to take a handicap kid, I don't see that it would be, because we have to make sure they're safe.
Okay, it sounds like you're, basically, you're saying that the, if there, there are regulations in place in addition to what you were already dealing with for the daycare center, you would have to investigate those before you could admit?
Yes.
Any other question for the applicant? Do you have any more, more recent updates for us concerning VDH and VDOT?
The land surveyor came out just today, so we're waiting on the map for, that they are going to make. And I'm also still waiting on part of the paperwork for the septic portion of it.
At this point, do you know whether VDOT has, at least in a preliminary, preliminary stage, said that the narrow, relatively narrow right-of-way in there is going to be adequate for this, this purpose?
Yes, VDOT sent someone out and said that we're good to go after the map, basically, is what I understood it to be.
Okay, and they're not requiring commercial entrance or anything like that, it's just a...
As long as we're 10 kids or under, they're not going to require that. If we did try to go up to the 12, which we're not planning to at this time, then we would have to make some modifications.
Okay, thank you. Any further question for the applicant on this? Did you say that your VDH has not been approved? It has or has not?
We're waiting on the paperwork from the soil evaluator. Some sort of engineer, sorry, I don't remember their exact title.
So basically, if we move this forward, it would have to be on the condition that both of those things be completed, I guess, which we have done sometimes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Those items for both VDOT and VDH, as you expressed, are in their permit, that they would have to submit those approvals prior to operation. They are Items Number 7 and 8.
Okay, so with those present in the conditions, should we choose to, we could go ahead and just recommend this to the board as it is, because they're part of the conditions?
If you like this project, that seems appropriate.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further question for the applicant? All right, any public comment on this case? Any public comment? All right, do we have a motion on this case?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that case number SU-04-25-01 be approved or be submitted to the Board Supervisors for approval upon Conditions 7 and 8 be approved by the appropriate agencies before operation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, are we eliminating the other conditions that are in the special use, or in the draft of the permit, and only carrying 7 and 8?
For, as far as discussion went, I was going to ask that question and just ask if we don't want to just include...
All conditions.
Basically, the conditions outlined in the special use permit approval with conditions document from June 4th.
Would you like to restate the motion, or...
Yeah, I'm thinking about how I want to reword that.
Okay. With all conditions.
That all conditions, 1 through 10, be... I don't remember what the word on it is, I'm looking for it. Adhere to. Adhere to. Complied with. Complied with. Before operation.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, let me see if I can restate that. The motion's been made and seconded to recommend to the Board Supervisors for approval, case number SU-04-25-01, with all conditions as submitted. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained, okay. Mr. Elliott has abstained. All right, next case is case number SU-04-25-02, River House at the Swinging Bridge. This is a special use permit. Scott Sidley is seeking a special use permit in accordance with Madison County Zoning Ordinance 4-1-1 and 3-1-22, reference Article 20-168, to operate more than one short-term lodging unit. The subject property is identified as 36 Meadows Lane and further identified as Madison County Tax Map 21-40. The parcel is 13.24 acres and is Zoned A1. Anything to add, Mr. Nichols?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the, a draft of the permit, similar to the previous cases in your packet, it defines what we're permitting, and there is the, the rough site plan that Mr. Sidley submitted attached to the permit as well. The, the highlights are that we are permitting, or the draft permit expresses that, should you choose to approve it or change it, the main house, bungalow 1 and bungalow 2 are suggested for approval of the special use permit, as that mac, is the maximum capacity of the drain field. There is language in the draft permit that states that the building official shall enter, or shall issue a certificate of occupancy prior to those structures being rented to the public to ensure public safety. And it expressly prohibits the use of bungalow, bungalow 3, which is the deck across the road and the garage, as being used as overnight accommodation unless the applicant comes back to modify their special use permit. I pulled all of this from the previous discussions that we've had. That's all I have to add. Oh, I did hear one, one piece of feedback from the public, who, one of the neighbors who did not object to the activity, said that he knows it's been rented in the past and it's never bothered him, so I've not heard any negative feedback.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Nichols?
I do have one. On, on number four, Mr. Nichols, the CO, is there not a CO in place currently for those bungalows since they have been rented, or is this just an additional...
There is no certificate of occupancy in place for bungalow 1 and bungalow 2. These units were converted without permits. The building official is actively working with the applicant. They're communicating and making efforts to come into compliance.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Nichols? We do have the VDH permit in hand. I don't think we had any questions for VDOT about this.
I had requested comment from VDOT, and I did never receive a response.
Okay. All right, any further questions for Mr. Nichols? Is the applicant present? Yes. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Any public comment on this case? Any public comment? Nobody online either, thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. I'll move that we send case number SU-04-25-02, as outlined with the proffers, to the Board of Supervisors for approval.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to send the case number SU-04-25-02 with all conditions to the Board Supervisors, recommended for approval. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, gentlemen. All right, moving on, we have a couple of other items to quickly move through. Alan, I'll let you go ahead and move from there, please. Our, our annual change of...
Sure. There is a conflict on the July workshop that is currently scheduled for July 16th. If I'm not mistaken, I believe parade is scheduled for that night or some other activity, and so if the Planning Commission would see fit to reschedule that workshop, that may be beneficial to all parties.
Any discussion? Comments, suggestions? See, I believe our, we have certain requirements set forth, but when we do have to change a meeting date, Jim, you're kind of our expert on that. How many, are we supposed to do the next available day or something like that? Bylaws?
Give us just a moment here, please.
Well, Mr. Chairman, while the attorney pulls up your bylaws, I was just looking, the fair date this year is July 16th, June 19th, and normally the parade kicks off the fair week, so that's what you're, we're always up against is the fair. The parade, excuse me.
Pretty much every year, yeah.
Yeah.
There is five Wednesdays in July, could make sense to move it to the 23rd.
Okay, so potential for the 23rd.
And still leave a break in between other meetings.
I'm looking at the Planning Commission bylaws, this is 6-1. When a regularly scheduled meeting falls on a legal holiday, the meeting shall be rescheduled. Or to the extent we need to, we can say this meeting's canceled and then special meeting's going to be the regular meeting. To me, it's not that critical which way we do it, but...
Chairman, I'll make a motion to move the workshop to the 23rd.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded twice. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of moving the July workshop meeting to July the 23rd, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So it will be moved to July 23rd, and we won't have to try to get through the parade. All right, thank you. Okay, Alan, you have a modification for the zoning ordinance, Article 16, here listed?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I strongly suspect that the Board will give direction on this shortly for us to take under concession, under consideration the Development Impact Ordinance, which is Article 16. Mr. Smith has done a wonderful job of unpacking some of this and some of the issues and holes in the, in the ordinance as it exists, and since the, the new Senate bill has been passed and adopted, we feel that it's critical that we address this to make sure that the county is in a sound position should future development come our way. So we will discuss that more upcoming as we get direction from the Board.
Okay. Does anyone have a question for Mr. Nichols pending Board direction? Okay, if not, let's move on to, all right, again, back in your court, upcoming PC workshop items.
Mr. Esch will have his second zoning text amendment workshop later this month. We have two applications that are currently tabled, the Full Life Journey Farm, which is Reggie Lipscomb. I spoke to him last week, and he expressed an interest in being on the schedule for the June workshop. He is still working on remedying the violation he has with the Health Department, and so depending on what timing of that looks like, he may or may not be on the schedule. We heard four cases at preliminary development yesterday, so all of them were recommended to go forward to the Planning Commission, and so I'm looking forward to bringing you more information on those as we receive those individuals' applications and getting them scheduled for the workshop. That's all I have for you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Again, any general public comment before we finish up? Any public comment on any topic? Nobody online? Thank you. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
So are we going to be kind of being held to Mr. Esch's requirements or requests for two workshops? Or is this going to be something we're going to be looking at for a while and not try to get this done in two workshops? Being we don't have all the information in the first one.
Right. Good, that's a very good point. Since this is introduced as a case, and yet we're going to need to probably do a lot of, of research on this.
Mr. Chairman.
We can't, yeah, traditionally, we do two workshops, but I don't think that's...
I did ask Mr. Esch to provide the illustrations to show the before and the after, what it looks like as it's written now, what development would look like to the minimums, and what it would look like to his proposed changes. I do suspect that if you expressed an interest to Mr. Esch to defer his case a month or so, he's stated here previously that he was willing to stretch it out and give a little more time for proper consideration. I suspect that he wouldn't mind me saying that he would prefer that, to be, to have amendments properly considered versus something rushed that was outside of everybody's comfort zone to where he didn't find success. that was outside of everybody's comfort zone to where he didn't find success. So I'm happy to relay any information that you would like to Mr. Esch to facilitate your discussion.
Mr. Chairman, what does a bylaw say that once he comes forth, how much time he has before we have to make a decision?
I'm not sure that we have one for a zoning text amendment, but if we're treating it as a case, we have the ability to table things, so.
Do our bylaws specify the two workshops? Or is that just traditional?
I don't think it specifies the two workshops. I think it requires.
All right, that's a really good point, Mike and Pete. I think probably what we may want to do is to go the committee route. We've got one standing committee that's not active right now. We should at least probably try to do something like that.
But we don't have the authority to a table if he says he don't want a table, correct?
Based on the idea that we've been doing two workshops only. But we may have to look at that more closely. Well, we'll have to ask our expert over here, but he doesn't seem to see that in the bylaws. I think that's something that's been kind of a unstated tradition.
Oh, I've seen it happen.
You've seen, yeah, okay. So kind of pending further information, we'll deal with this at the next workshop then, and especially if he's amenable to the idea. I think probably, well, is there any, anyone who does not want to have one of the standing committees take a look at this? Or at least some kind of a committee look at this in detail?
If you were going to be given one of these committees, do we need more information on what he really wants yet? Or what we're looking at?
Well, I think what Mr. Nichols is saying is he's going to be providing us some at the workshop.
Well, that would be on the second workshop. So then the committee would start at the second workshop and wouldn't really allow a lot of time.
Yeah. I suspect that what we're going to find is that we've got more leeway in terms of time for an amendment to the ordinance itself. That's a little different kind of case. So. Especially if the applicant has no, as he said before, has no real objection to spending time on it. Any other discussion on that topic? So we'll kind of see what happens at the second workshop and go from there. And we'll also go back through the bylaws and make sure there's nothing specific about that. All right, any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify a little bit more.
Yes, sir.
If we went to the third workshop in this instance, we could just vote to turn it down and not send it to the board, correct? And continue discussion on that? Or does it start the whole process over? Should we feel like we need more time? And additionally, we'd have more public comment on this pretty big topic. Is that a fair assessment or?
If you made a motion to turn it down, I assume it would go to the governing body.
But is it, he allows a table at least once?
He can table it, he can't table it for as long as.
Yeah, I think he can table it at least once.
Yeah, and I think probably at a workshop that if we need that, I don't think that would be something that we couldn't ask him to do. Okay, any further discussion on that? All right, so we'll see how it plays out at the next workshop. Okay. Any further discussion? Anyone want to make a motion?
So moved.
Move for adjournment?
Yes, sir.
Any second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we adjourn, thank you.
All right, I'd like to call the Board of Supervisors portion of the meeting to order. We do have a forum, we do need to adopt an agenda. Anybody have anything we need to add to the agenda this evening? It was a pleasure, the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. General public comment? Anybody have any general public comment? Is anybody watching us? Yeah, that's pretty good. All right, we'll do public comment multiple more times. Let's, case number RZ dash oh four dash twenty five dash oh one. Madison Wood Preservers rezoning application. Carrie Gavaria, on behalf of Madison Wood Preservers, has applied to rezone property identified as ninety-eight Oak Park Road, Madison County Tax Map thirty-nine dash ninety-six with point nine three six acres and two oh six Oak Park Road, Madison County Tax Map thirty-nine dash ninety-eight. And that's point seven oh one acres from R two residential to M two industrial. The purpose of the rezoning application is to facilitate the expansion of Madison Wood Preservers. Mr. Nichols, anything to add?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for Mr. Nichols, Hannah, or Jonathan? All right. Carrie, anything to add? Any questions for the applicant? All right, to the public, to the public. No public comment. Back to the board. What would you all like to do?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. This is, this is straightforward, but this is the kind of development that we want where we want it. So I think this is the kind of stuff we hopefully, hopefully will see more of.
Absolutely. So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number RZ dash zero four dash twenty five dash zero one. Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you all, we'll see you next month. All right, case number SU dash oh four dash twenty five dash oh one. Devilla and Smith Family Day Home, special use permit. Kelsey Smith and Ian Devilla are seeking a special use permitting in accordance with Madison County zoning ordinance, Article five dash two dash five, to operate a daycare center. The subject property is identified as four oh one Burnt Tree Way and further identified as Madison County Tax Map fifty-eight dash seventy F. The parcel is three point five acres and is zoned R one. Mr. Nichols?
I would recommend approval of this one because our community certainly does need more daycare. Our applicant has tried very hard to jump through all of the hoops and there are many to do this type of a business. So even though some of these items have stretched on, I have every confident, I'm very confident that the applicant will complete what she started and we hope she does.
Yes, sir. Questions for Mr. Nichols or any of staff? Anybody? All right. Ms. Smith, anything to add? Anybody have any questions for Ms. Smith? Judge, please.
Just real quick, what kind of experience do you have when it comes to daycare?
I've been a nanny for about three years and part of that, I was an RN.
Thank you.
I'd say I can assure the rest of the board members, you know, since Skyline Cap is in this business with the same licenses that we carry, for one hundred and seventy-nine kids, you'll have to carry for twelve. So jumping through our hoops is the least of what she's going to have to adhere to.
Other questions for Ms. Smith?
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Just for the applicant, in regards to Mr. Elliott's concerns, I can't give any legal advice. I just encourage you to become conversant with the ADA and the idea of reasonable accommodations and what those things mean and what exceptions there might be. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Hannah. All right, any questions? All right, to the public, to the public. Zero, yeah. All right, back to the board. What would you all like to do?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number SU dash zero four dash two five dash zero one for approval, as recommended by the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by just saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, ma'am. Case number SU dash oh four dash twenty five dash oh two, River House at Swinging Bridge, special use permit. Scott Sidley is seeking a special use permit in accordance with Madison County zoning ordinance four dash one dash one and three dash one dash twenty-two. Reference Articles twenty dash one sixty A to operate more than one short-term lodging unit. The subject property is identified as thirty-six Meadows Lane and further identified as Madison County Tax Map twenty-one dash forty. The parcel is thirteen point two four acres and is zoned A one. Mr. Nichols?
Mr. Sidley certainly has been working with us to get into compliance with all of the relevant ordinances. His project seems in line with our comprehensive plan. So staff would view it favorably.
Any questions for Mr. Nichols or any of staff?
No, sir.
Anybody?
Just one point of clarification, which is, and Mr. Sidley can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what we learned through the process is that, Mr. Sidley, they're making this application as trustees for their family trust and that's how the property's titled. So just wanted to make that clear to everybody.
Yes, sir. Anything else for Hannah? Mr. Sidley, anything to add? Any questions for Mr. Sidley?
No, sir.
Anybody? All right, to the public, to the public. There, yeah. Back to the board, what would you all like to do?
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve case number SU zero four two five zero two, River House at Swinging Bridge.
Second.
And is that as recommended by the Planning Commission?
As recommended by the Planning Commission.
Yep. All right. Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you all. All right, new business. Mr. Weekly, would you like to start with the modifications of the zoning ordinance, Article sixteen?
Yes, I would. And we'll get, if you'd like to see Article sixteen in its current form, I can get, request Mr. Nichols to bring that up. Just a little backdrop, Mr. Nichols already mentioned this, kind of where we found ourselves in needing to revise some of our ordinance, particularly around the site plan and subdivision ordinance, which is a product of Senate Bill nine seventy-four that's signed until it will become effective July first. But there are other things why certainly Mr. Nichols has moved along. The Board of Supervisors saw the amendments that will do the, what we call the quick fix, making it compliant, where the designated agent will review those and administratively approve and there are certain timelines. However, there are other things in ordinances that kind of work hand in hand, if you will. And Article sixteen is one of those concerns. I'm going to throw this out here as a logic standpoint. While normally the process would be Planning Commission, you'd have wonderful public input, which you should have and SB nine seventy-four took you right away from that. But the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission would always normally be informed of site plans and subdivisions. And if you saw one that was of the size, you think you would need a fiscal impact analysis or a development impact study, then you can require it per Article sixteen to do that. Well, after July one, those items go to your designated agent. You're not going to see those. How do you know if you're going to request a development impact study? So the thought was, you know, that's going to need some attention. I've talked to some of you all on the board. If the Board of Supervisors would like the Planning Commission to take this up, normally that is via directive from the Board of Supervisors. So we have that as discussion item. Mr. Nichols, anything you'd like to add on Article sixteen? And I do want to publicly acknowledge and thank Mr. Smith for his time. He's put a lot of time and effort and thought into his submittals. So thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Nichols?
After the direction from the board at the meeting we had a week or so ago, I did review much of the information that Mr. Smith had presented, which is extensive and he spent a lot of time on. And the more layers we pulled back on this and references to state code and good planning principles, we really need more time than the short amount of time we have to make something that is meaningful, serves our community and, you know, doesn't end up doing harm to us or developers we may want. So we will take a little more time in unpacking this. But otherwise, I think it'll be a good, a good complement to the other changes that we're proposing.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may add one other thing. So, Mr. Nichols has the site plan and subdivision ordinance amendments. We believe those in good order and that includes the revision that Supervisor Yow called from your meeting last week. So those are ready to go. Article sixteen, it really determines up to you and/or the Planning Commission of the timing to get this done. Initially, we were thinking maybe advertise for July second, Article sixteen. I think it would behoove us, my recommendation, and we've talked some internally and certainly Hannah can chime in. It may be best, let it go through that process, give staff the appropriate time as well as the Planning Commission, and then come back at a future date. So, correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, I think maybe staff recommendations would be to, you have your public hearing for the site plan and subdivision, but let's hold off on the Article sixteen for July second and maybe shoot for an August or September joint meeting date to do so.
If I may add one thing.
Yes, please.
Mr. Weekly. Let's say also in the recommendations from the Economic Development Committee, Mr. Smith, is the recommendation for a fiscal impact analysis ordinance, which has a lot of teeth. And it would be nice to consider that as a separate ordinance to complement the development impact ordinance.
Any thoughts on time? And I think it'd be good to, some things we don't deliver right now, but I think this is one good one. Is there any staffing recommendation, August, September? I don't want to put us in a box, but we do have to give appropriate time.
Development impact is not as extensive as financial impact analysis. Mr. Smith will ask for your opinion, but I.
The, the. It depends on your risk appetite.
The, exactly. Let's proceed with our site plan and subdivision, public hearing for July second. I do think timeliness is of the essence, but doing it the right way is the better way. I think that we tasked, with a motion, we should task the Planning Commission to do a fiscal impact study ordinance and development impact implementation ordinance pertaining to Article sixteen, but have that as a goal of the August sixth date. And that would be the next joint meeting past July. Does that sound realistic, Hannah? You all think that's remotely realistic?
Just so I'm clear on the steps. It's going to go to, is it going to go to a subcommittee of the Planning Commission? Or?
That is the Planning Commission's.
Per view.
Per view, we just task to them. I think, I think whatever makes it timely and gets this thing going with the right pieces in place, I think that's kind of a good direction to go.
We've got a strong start with Mr. Smith's work.
Absolutely.
But August sixth is tight. I'll leave it to, I can, you're not moving at, Lord willing, you're not moving at the pace of me, but it's a big group, so I don't want to speak for everybody. It seems tight, but I can.
Is there a lot of cases? Do we know if there's a lot of cases pending July second? The reason why I ask that, and again, to the chairman's point, it's the Planning Commission's prerogative if they want to use their meetings for other things. If the July joint meeting is light, I know we have the other text amendment or ordinance amendments. Maybe that could be used kind of a workshop as well, or at least to dive into Article sixteen. Because you'll have that, you'll have your meeting that was just moved to July twenty-third. Really as your two points of, to meet together unless you call a special meeting before the August sixth timeline.
So, Mr. Chairman, are we, are we going? So are we at the point where we're going to do the Band-Aid on July second?
No.
Not on sixteen, I don't.
Yeah, okay.
Just, just on appendix two pertaining to site plans and subdivisions, make that compliant with state law on July second. Don't do the Band-Aid. Try to get something going by the August sixth. I think that we certainly meet, we certainly meet here in, what? Heck, by the, how long does that have to be advertised, Hannah?
It's about twenty-eight days. So we'll need to have it by the end of July, really.
It's about 28 days, so we'll need to have it by the end of July, really. I mean, sorry, the end of June.
So what about if we, we, we put the expectation to hit the joint meeting in August, I think August 6, but we know we're gonna come back July 2, and if things are not progressing in a timely manner, we can always move it back by one month?
Do a temperature check then?
Yeah. But I do think setting a timeline, because of the tolerance of risk and applications going in, I see, Pete, I'll get to you, I think we need to put a timeline on this. Pete, what do you got?
I was just gonna tell the chairman that I think rather than having a two or three hours meeting, it would be better if we all met and got more input, get covered.
Do that at the joint meeting?
No, do that at our workshop.
Yes, excuse me, excuse me.
With the planning commission, rather than we put the committee, because I think there's a lot of input from the governing body.
Is everybody on board with tasking the planning commission to look at these two ordinances specifically on Article 16?
Absolutely. The rest of the work's already done.
Absolutely. We gotta give tremendous credit to Mr. Smith in getting us ahead on this. We do need a motion to ask the planning commission to look at this and then put a deadline on it.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Thank you. All right, Mr. Weekly, let's talk about modifications to 5-2-1.
Again, thank you, allowing the opening, and then I'll pivot to, to Mr. Nichols for Article 5. If you noticed on the prior case of the planning commission or their agenda, there was one case that was, has been tabled. What we learned from that case, that was the last case that was tabled, there's agriculture activity that can exist, 'cause we're an agricultural community, right? And there are some tracts of land that are smaller than R1's own land, but are A1, or vice versa. And we learned of a situation where a family had some goats, and via complaint of neighbors of goats, that's how we generally look into things, so really, this could open up Pandora's Box if you think of 4-H families, which we have a very active participation of 4-H folks in the community. So we really just wanna look at, really, the planning commission and the board, what are their thoughts? Does the current ordinance really fit the spirit of Madison County today, and does it need to be amended? Alan, what are your thoughts on this article as it proposed to livestock in the various zoning districts?
Well, just my personal opinion, but it seems silly in this case. It doesn't match the other districts. If you can have a parcel across the street that's zoned A1, and this is not a problem, you can have a parcel on the opposite side that's zoned R1, and it is a problem. It's not consistent. And, I mean, I'm glad that we're complaint-driven in how we investigate these matters, because I'd hate to think of going around the county and looking at everybody with a goat and their zoning, and telling them they gotta come spend $500 on a permit.
So this is one of the things, Mr. Chairman, just like your Article 16, if the board supervisor chooses to like the planning commission to do some review of this, that is certainly your purview to give direction to the planning commission and/or staff?
I do have some negative opinions of goats. Other than that, though, I think it's ridiculous. This isn't Fairfax County. We need to obviously address this in a common sense way for Madison. I think this is another one. Let's task the planning commission to look into it and come up with a reasonable alternative. Timeliness is not as much of, to the nature, so let them kinda work at it on their own pace.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Thank you, Pete. All right, last one, we've got IT consulting contract. Know everybody's reached back out, done some modifications. Has everybody reviewed it at this junction?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any issue in...
Alan's gonna pivot to it right now. I would like to clarify, and I think, thank you for the board members who provided feedback. So I'll just touch base on, I think it's a five-page document. So the modifications were made, actually, I can work off mine and tell you.
You wanna drive, you wanna mose?
No, I'm fine, sir. If you go to page 4, paragraph 9, it needed a little cleanup, so we wanted to work to really specify that the contract period or the term of the agreement begins June 1, 2025, and ends December 1, 2025. So that was a modification. Initially, I think it said June 1 to December 1, and it was just some confusion of the wording. So we clarified that, and if you go to the last page, Schedule A, thank you Supervisor Jewett for that. We went back initially, there was a question, was it 56 hours a week? And then I was told, you know, well, maybe it's 56 hours a month. I said, well, what's the aggregate? Because we budgeted amount, which that budget amount was $12,600, that comes out to a total aggregate of 168 hours that can be used during that period. So in Schedule A, paragraph 1 in the Part 1, that last sentence reflects that. Total aggregate of hours for contract period is not to exceed 168 hours. I worked with Hanon, Ms. Warren, I've met with Alan, the director, and certainly Mr. Livingston, who will be fulfilling this role should the board supervisors approve. This direction was based on conversation with the board to pursue Mr. Livingston as a consultant. Quite frankly, we got some onboarding of new staff and some server upgrades, so this would allow a short period of time, not long-lived, but a short period of time for, to retain Mr. Livingston to help with some onboarding and server configuration, and then as this sun sets, he will ride off into the sunset if you so approve. So those were the minor changes, my apologies, but I did want to clarify those changes, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have. If not, you just, Mr. Chairman, whoever makes the motion, just determine who you wanna authorize to sign this, if it's the chairman, if it's the county administrator, but I stand by to take the direction of the board supervisor.
Do we have questions or comments on this?
No, I think we've got it pretty well ironed out now.
I think this is, this is, we've made such significant investments in IT, and to have employees that are responsible and looking towards Madison's success and not just their own, I mean, what a privilege it is. Anybody have anything? I think we should authorize Jonathan to sign this document.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize Jonathan, the county administrator, to sign this document.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Any information in correspondence?
No, sir.
All right, anybody? Public comment? Back to that, still zero. No closed session. What would you all like to do?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Thank you all.